If you read my...
What?
See, twenty-two days is what I'm...
Yeah. Two-five seven. Or west side. Come on, man, if you want it, you can turn it up. Oh, shit. I said, "Make it not dark anymore." I wanted support. Not support, I wanted to know what's happening.
Talk.
How about that's the only one you got there, turn your television off.
Drive one?
Well, there's a little island in the middle, but... Like, yeah. Yeah. Do you see where he parked? Jump right?
Are you direct or something?
Yeah.
Hey there, how are you? What brings you here?
Members of the committee of the public hearing commission, I'd like to take a moment to review our annual operating procedures. Our meeting is divided into two sessions, the public hearing session and the verbatim session. And applications, in terms of public hearing session, and applications for a group application. All meetings noted at call. The applicant may choose to have a verification. Commission member has any questions, members of the public may hear call. Um, four people...
May speak for an agenda item and for against. Each speaker is limited to five minutes, subject to questions by the commission. After four minutes, a loud beep will indicate one minute left to speak. And at this point, please summarize your comments. After all opposition speakers have finished, the applicant will be given time to respond. If you do intend to speak, please come to the podium, speak into the microphone, and give your name and address for our minutes. Please direct all comments to the commission only and not to the applicant or the audience. And please remember to speak directly into the microphone. On routine applications, the applicant may simply raise his or her hand if there are no objections to the staff recommendations. I will then announce that the applicant is in full agreement with those recommendations. If there are any questions, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. After hearing all applications, the commission will go into deliberation session. In the deliberation session, the commissioners discuss each application with input from the staff as necessary, but with no input from the audience. The commissioners then vote on each application. The results of the planning, of the voting can be learned from the planning department. If some issues arise in the deliberation session that were not addressed in the public hearing, the chairman has the discretion either to allow additional comments pertaining to those issues in order to resolve them or to call for the application to be held over for discussion at a future meeting. Occasionally, one or more commission members may recuse themselves from discussing and voting on a given application. A recusal does not necessarily mean the member is directly involved with the application or the applicant. Depending upon the circumstances, ethical rules may require a recusal when there is only the slightest appearance of conflict of interest. If a regular member recuses, a supernumerary will vote in their stead. The planning commission makes final decisions subject to appeal on subdivisions, planning approvals, and planned unit developments. The planning commission only makes recommendations on zoning applications, with the city council making final decisions. Please turn off all cell phones at this time. I would also like to welcome Anna Kate in Brooklyn from Faith Academy. They are shadowing Councilwoman Rich today, and they are in the audience, so they're gonna get to see what happens here. Thank you very much. My name is Liba Latham. Mr. John Valles. Shirley Sessions.
Here.
Mr. Thomas Doyle.
Here.
Taylor Atchison.
Here.
Kena Andrews.
Here.
Beth Rich.
Here.
Ellen Cameron.
Here.
Okay. We're ready to get going. Number one. Fulton Road Baptist Church subdivision, re-subdivision of Lot Two.
Mike speaks, I represent the Fulton Road Baptist Church. Uh, we have, have had some delays in their attorney overlooking, overlooking over some of the situation, trying to come to a resolution with the staff.
Mm-hmm.
So we'd like to request a holdover on this application.
Uh, Ms. Rosen, do they need two weeks or January meeting?
We would still have to have time to review whatever they submit, January fourth. Is that acceptable?
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. This application will most likely be held over. If you are here to speak in favor of it or in opposition to it, you may do so at this time, but it will come up for, come up again on our January fourth agenda. Is anyone here that would like to speak for that or against it? Thank you very much. Number two. Sixty-fifty White Bark Drive. This subdivision is recommended for tentative approval.
Madam Chairman, if I may, uh, since the staff recommendation went out, we were made aware of some notification issues. The proposed subdivision will be accessed via a, an existing private road. The owner of that private road was not notified, nor, to our knowledge, has he granted permission for access. So, um, I believe the applicant's gonna request holdover, and staff recommendation coming in was going to be either holdover or withdrawal.
Okay.
My name is Steve Pumpfreen, I'm with Duberry, and, uh, we would like to ask that it be held over. The notification definitely would know that we would need to re-notify to be sure that property owner is notified, but the bigger issue is the access, permission for access. We were unaware that it was private drive owned by an individual. So, we'll have to work that detail out, so that's why we're asking to be held over.
So, hold it over till January fourth?
At a minimum. Uh, we don't know if they would be able to come to agreement. I believe that property owner is here today, uh, so you may want to wait until hearing from them uh, to decide whether a holdover is appropriate or withdrawal.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone, anyone else here in favor of this application? The applicant has asked for a holdover, it may well be held over. If you are here to speak against it, you may do so now. I understand the owner of that property is here.
He, he was in our office earlier.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, big cast, I'm the property owner. I have no problem with a holdover if, uh, give the gentleman a chance to contact me and discuss the easement.
Thank you.
All right?
And which entry, we're talking about the, the main entry point right there?
The only.
Correct.
This, at this point, is the only access to the property. This street stub is to vacant land. There is no development.
Yeah. And that was recommended for a security gate, according to the staff report?
Yes.
So they don't, yeah.
Uh, but, as I said, we, we've learned a lot since the staff report was written and published, so...
Okay. And you're, and it was recommended for January fourth, are you, you're comfortable with that date?
Give a little time to discuss first, yes.
Does that give the staff enough time? You're good with that?
Yes, ma'am, because, you know, the, the only thing that would change would be...
Yes, an agreement.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak in opposition to this? Or... All right. Number three. Range line crossings subdivision. This application is recommended for tentative approval. You're in agreement with all the recommendations?
Yes.
Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in favor of this? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to it? Thank you. Number four. Engate Place subdivision. Is the applicant present? You're in agreement with everything? Is there anyone here who would like, anyone additionally that would like to speak in favor of this? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to it? Thank you very much. Number five. Thirty-two oh-one Bay Road. This application has been recommended for tentative approval.
Jerry Burr, Burt Surveying Company, for the owner. One moment. What I'm asking for is elimination of Condition One, which is a curb radius at the corner. It's really not necessary. I know. Wake y'all up. The green line is what is an existing right-of-way today. When they widened Bay Road, they took a triangle off the end, which came fifty feet back and fifty feet down, and went a straight line. The orange line you see is approximately a forty-seven foot radius. I mean, twenty-five foot, just really not needed. No, no turnout on there is needed because of the way they cut that corner off. That's the only thing.
That everything?
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Burr. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here who'd like to speak against it? Okay, thank you.
Is there any, any comment on that from traffic?
Yeah, I was gonna ask. Since the application's in the county, I did not review it, but looking at the site online, that looks like a typical Aldott site triangle that they would do at an intersection, so a radius wouldn't be necessary if a triangle's there already.
Good, thank you.
So number one is... Thank you. Uh, number six. Enterprise subdivision, eight fifty West I sixty-five Service Road.
Jerry Burr, Burt Surveying again. Condition Three, which will also affect Condition Six. Placement a note on Lot One, limiting, a play on, a note on the plat limiting Lot One to one curb cut, Service Road, and, uh, Lot Two to one, one curb cut. Lot One is three hundred feet of frontage on the Service Road, which is certainly ample to support two curbs... to support two curb cuts. In existence today is a double-wide entrance into this property with an island in the middle. Total width of it's a hundred and four and a half feet. We would ask that, and, and I've talked to staff, and I've talked to traffic engineering shortly, right here at the start of the meeting, we're asking for two curb cuts to Lot Two, and the one to Lot, no, excuse me, two curb cuts to Lot One, one curb cut to Lot Two, or as approved by ALDOT. They may not approve it, but if we can have that condition on the plat to do it if, if ALDOT will approve it.
That's to the Service Road?
Sure.
One curb cut for Lot Two, and two on Lot One, to the Service Road?
That's right.
Does a traffic engineer have any thoughts on that?
Since it is ALDOT right-of-way, technically, the city only permits sidewalk on this roadway, so they would have the final say on the driveway. So if we leave it open, let the developer-owner deal with ALDOT on what they could get. I think that's fair.
So ALDOT will set the width of the curb cuts as well? That's not something we need to?
Yes, they would. And even, their standard driveway design is much larger than ours, and they might take that into account. Their access management manual, I think, if it's less than six hundred feet, they only let them have one. There's a lot of variables of this application as well. They, they will view it as a redevelopment, obviously, since the building was demolished, and it's gonna be brand-new, so it, it's gonna be up to the developer-owner to make a case to the DOT to get the access they may want.
So does there have to be, can we just eliminate number three, and not have any discussion of curb cut in there at all, since it's gonna be up to ALDOT, or do we need to?
The, the comment about the access to Western American, America Drive still, still stands, so you can just say that the access to the Service Road is subject to ALDOT approval, and the access to Western America Drive is limited to the one curb cut.
To one?
Yes, ma'am.
And, and that would also need to be changed in traffic engineering comments in number six.
Number six as well.
Thank you, Mr. Burr. That's all. I was just making notes. Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak against it? Thank you very much. We'll move on to number seven. Clark Jr. Subdivision, eighty-nine seventy-seven Ingleside Avenue. Is the applicant present? And you're okay with all the recommendations? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to it? Thank you. We'll move on to number eight. Old Range Line Road Commercial Subdivision. This has been recommended for tentative approval.
Mike speaks, with speaks engineering. My client, Mr. James Fenter, proposes to put nine lots on twenty-one acres on the east side of a Range Line, Range Line Road, Old Range Line Road. This property is approximately nine hundred and sixty feet south of River View Point Drive, and I know these, some people here today that want some questions answered, so I'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this subdivision? Is there anyone here to speak against it?
My name's John Lawdler. My office is at eight oh-four Commerce Building, Mobile, Alabama. And I represent Suzanne Trovenger and her Property Owners Association. And I've looked at the application, and what, what it calls for is the creation of nine commercial lots along a very substandard street, with cuts into that street for nine different businesses that we don't know anything about. Which leads one to think, you know, there may be some traffic issues involved in this application. And this application presents you with an opportunity to try to solve those, and the courts have approved methods to do that. In a case, Mobile case, Walden versus City of Mobile, a service road was required, so you only had one point of access. And in this case, it's a very large piece of property. You could have a, one street coming into the development. Of course, the developer would have to put down some streets, and I dare say that the reason for the configuration you see right now is to avoid the construction of streets. But you're, you're creating something that's gonna be a hazard, and of course, public safety is all a part of subdivision approval, and it's something that you need to consider. The public safety of the people around them. And also, you need to consider whether or not this development is depreciating property around it, and whether neighboring property owners will, will have property that will be less valuable because of this development. We have here today a number of people who live in subdivisions and streets just around this property, and I'd ask those that are interested to please raise their hand, so that the planning commission will know the extent of their interest. They're all interested in the protection of their property. And of course, that's the purpose of, of the subdivision regulations. I mean, you couldn't have subdivision regulations if you didn't have that purpose. The protection of the public, and the protection of neighboring property owners. In a case style Nugent versus the City of Mobile, the court came to the conclusion that if prop, if a development depreciates the value, if a subdivision depreciates the value of surrounding property, then that subdivision's gonna be denied. And I think it's pretty apparent, just looking at what we have, that this is gonna be the case. Nine commercial establishments on a very narrow street have just got to create traffic problems, and it's gotta have a depreciating effect. And it all can be solved. This is sort of an opportunity for the planning commission, I think, to do something other than just approve something that the developer brings. You can work with the developer, and this neighborhood that I represent, they would like to have some input into that. You can work with, and get, you know, say, listen, we need to do this a different way. We're not trying to keep you from developing your property, but what we're trying to do is keep you from destroying ours, and for creating a burden on the rest of the community. I mean, this is not ready, and there needs to be, you know, you gotta address the access problem. And it's there. You've got the power to do it. I know that there's a, excuse, I know that there's a tendency to come to the conclusion that if it meets the technical requirements, we've got to approve it, and I'm here to tell you, that's not true. I was the lawyer for the city in the Nugent case, and I'm very familiar with the lawyer, not, not me, but before me, that was the lawyer in the Walden case. Both Mobile cases. Both which give you that power. And what I ask you to do is not hesitate to use it. If we don't, if you want to get involved with it, let's continue it over to another time, and let us meet with the developer, and see if we come up, can't come up with an alternative plan that protects both the public and neighboring property owners.
Thank you, Mr. Lawler. Yes, sir. Do you mind waiting to be third?
Ma'am. I'm Rick Courtney. I'm here on behalf of Alligator Bay Homeowners Association. There's a, there's a different plat that's in the application here that kind of shows a bigger picture of the area. If you see those kind of flag-shaped property here that comes out to five lots on Alligator Bay, I'd, I guess you'd say I developed that. I didn't really develop it, I tried to protect it. It was a hundred-acre piece of property, somebody's gonna put eighty lots on, so I bought it from them, and we have five houses on the point, and ninety acres are protected. Everybody that lives down there has big residential properties on the water. It's exclusively residential. And everybody moved there to get away from things like could be put on these lots if you allow it to happen. I agree with what Mr. Lawler says. I don't know that too much thought went into this subdivision. Why they're doing it, why they put it there, how they designed it, lack of access, but I can tell you this, it, John's right. It will totally devalue the, the surrounding residential properties, because the value of those properties is premised upon the fact that you don't have chemical facilities, truck lay-down yards, pipe facilities, and all this other kind of stuff that needs to be in a commercial area, being put in an area where everybody jogs, walks their dogs, and lives. My wife jogs past here all the time. I can't imagine her and her friends and coming in there and having eighteen-wheelers peeling out of these commercial lots. It's gonna destroy the area. I know your hands are tied to a degree because we're in this gray area. I wish y'all would fix that somehow, because otherwise, if you're required to rubber stamp any short-sighted, selfish, short-term profit plan, then there's no sense even having subdivision regulations in the area, because anything can go. I think John's right. There are other things that are more important than just technical foot requirements. They're gonna devalue. One reason there's so few people here, even though I think there's been fifty comments submitted to you in the space of one day, is that there was almost no notice of this provided to folks. Most of these neighbors didn't know about it till yesterday. I rode by there this morning. There's no signs providing notice of any subdivision. Maybe it's not required.
It's not.
But that's why no, I say nobody. There could be a hundred people here if adequate notice was provided. They would all be against it. Now, I tried to talk to the people that owned it, because I found out who they are, they're the Fenters. They're out of town at the St. Paul's football game. They're nice folks. If we had had a meeting with them, or if they let us know this was coming down the pipe, we probably could resolve some of this. I think we could talk them into not doing it. I think we could talk them into having a road to protect the safety considerations and traffic things that John brought up. I think we could talk them into maybe putting the whole acreage, which they have there, in a conservation easement. But we don't have time. If it goes through today as a rubber stamp deal, it's gonna take all that off the table. And I think you oughta, I think you oughta deny it, because it's bad, it's gonna depreciate. It should have different access routes instead of eight curb cuts with eighteen-wheelers on a pedestrian street. But if not, hold it over, and let us meet with the Fenters, and see if we can't come up with something that will not be so destructive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Courtney.
My name is Jim Ellis. I live at three-two-six-oh River View Point Drive. I haven't met these gentlemen. I drafted a letter, and I sent it to the planning commission last night, because I got the information on Tuesday from next-door neighborhood. And that was mysterious to start with. I've expressed most of what they've already said, independently of what they've, what they have come up with. I can attest to a few other things. That little lot that says vacant land, up on the bright nights of the word site, is not vacant. That's a residential property under construction, and the owner is here today. So that's inaccurate. The issue of traffic, hugely problematic. You'll see in my notes that last year I asked the county to look at the Rabbit Creek, River View Point Drive-Dog River intersection, because I think it needs a three-way stop sign at a minimum, and they decided that fifteen hundred cars a day going through there was not enough. A blind corner, it's a straight ninety-degree corner. You can't see traffic coming from the old Range Line. River View Point Drive is a straight ninety-degree as well. It's fairly open, so you can see traffic coming, but people don't slow down, so traffic there is a huge problem. Adding more construction in the area, more curb cuts, more traffic is gonna be a problem. If you live out in that area, you know that the ditches fill up with water very quickly. So drainage into that wetland area, I don't see how it's been addressed, other than drainage. Let's just dump more into the, into the Alligator Bayou area, and potentially run it over to the other side on River View, on the other side of River View Point Drive. So you've got wetlands issues, you've got traffic issues, and I've been told that you can't address use issues. But if you start subdividing, allowing divisions like this, this property is right next door to the city. I mean, someday, maybe the city will end up taking it over. Although it may be in the county, the house is right across the street, there is some commercial use, but there's residential property, rental properties, and right across the street, bounding right up against the city limits. So this isn't just a subdivision and, an issue. I, I'm typically not against things, but I would highly recommend that we have time to at least meet with the, the person who's proposing to develop this, figure out a way that maybe there's a better way to deal with it. I'm concerned that if you allow this, what will go between River View Point Drive and this sub, and this little commercial subdivision? That whole entrance area, you know, if it becomes commercial, if it's subdivided this way to follow this lead, boy, we're gonna have an entrance into a commercial area before we get back into our homes. So again, I have to say, there are an awful lot of questions. It would be incumbent upon the planning process to at least allow everyone to talk. I talked to Jerry Carl, I copied this to Jerry Carl. Basically, the county has absolutely nothing. It's amazing in this day and age that the county has no planning whatsoever. People are stunned when I call neighbors and told them about it. They're stunned. I mean, there is no voice. How do they define residential in that area? There is no residential property in that area. It's based on building permits. Thank you. My letter's self-explanatory.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis.
Good afternoon. I'm Debbie Foster. I'm the executive director of Dog River Clearwater Revival. I reside at four-five-zero-seven Park Road, three-six-six-zero-five. Thank you. I have not missed, I think, but one meeting of the map for Mobile process since it began over four years ago, I believe. One of the big things that we've talked about from day one is protection of the water quality of Dog River. Mobile's urban river, ninety-five square miles, a hundred and twenty-seven linear miles of shoreline. The biggest problem facing the water quality of Dog River is sedimentation. A potential development of nine lots with the impervious surface currently required under Mobile zoning codes and land use codes will extremely degrade, further degrade, the water quality of Halls Mill Creek, which is already on the three-oh-three-D list of impaired waterways in Alabama because of suspended solids. This would do nothing but increase that rate. Dog River's got a number of concerns about this, Dog River Clearwater Revival does. As I've stated already, it's on the three-oh-three-D list, this would add to it. We are well aware this is in the county, and that, you know, zoning rules and regulations in the county are non-existent. However, this is in the jurisdiction, the planning jurisdiction, and this body does have that requirement to help protect the integrity of the community. And I think this community has been very, very vocal and articulate today in expressing their concerns about that. However, I am also holding in my hand the watershed management plan for Dog River that has just been released. I think all of you on this body are familiar with the Mobile Bay National Estuary Program and what they've been doing to assist our watershed and others in trying to improve the water quality that has long been degraded in this area. Many of what are being, many of the, the items being put forth in this document are being cross-linked with the current plans that are undergo, being undergone by the city right now, to marry, if you will, the land use codes and the zoning codes to help fulfill the goals and objectives that the citizens of Mobile said that they wanted, and that is protected water quality and increased access to Mobile's waters. Halls Mill Creek currently is the site of one of our Dog River scenic blueway sites, one of the prettiest ones in town. So i-if we start degrading that, I agree with the man, if we open this type of, of a floodgate up, and right now, we are, we're in a gray zone, and my hat's off to you, because I know this is a bad, a bad time to be. You are, however, aware of the intent of these plans, and I think it, it would be, it's incumbent upon you, I feel, to remain true to what these plans are calling for, and stay with the intent. plans are calling for and stay with the intent of them. We, one of the strongest things that's being proposed, and I know right now, again, we're in the gray area, but it is the riparian buffers. It is being proposed that with the new standards that we would cease some built-in protections for whatever those lots would be that actually run along the stream banks and the edges of those tributaries. Currently, the way things are, you can build almost up to the edge. If this is approved the way it sits, that would still go through. We need you to, we are asking you, humbly asking you, to please deny this as this currently exists. Whether you want to hold it over and give them time to meet is up to you. But Dog River Clearwater Revival respectfully requests that you deny it as it sits now for the integrity of Dog River. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. I think that was our fourth speaker. Mr. Speaks, would you like to speak again?
I'd like to make some comments about our application. One comment was about the property between River View Point Drive and our development. The Fentures purposely moved a thousand feet south of River View Drive so it would not have as much impact on the residents in that subdivision. In fact, they developed the first subdivision on the left going into River View Drive. And I know it's their intent that the property that I just spoke of north of our development, it is developed, it will be developed residentially. Another point I'd like to point out is, and I think someone mentioned that there was no development, uh, commercial development in that area. Immediately across the street from our development, there's two lots that is being used commercially. In fact, I have pictures that was taken yesterday indicating that there's eight long-wheeled dump trucks and three lift trucks that are sitting on that property now. And I also have three or four other pictures that lot, of property that lies across the street from our development that indicates that this is not going to downgrade or devalue the property down there. So it's still, I request that it will be, this will be approved. Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners to me?
I actually do have one question. Everyone that spoke, well, actually, three of the four speakers in opposition requested a holdover. How, how do you feel about holding over for a couple of weeks to give them an opportunity to talk to?
I, um, it's hard for me to speak for the owner because they are out of town. I would just say if that's what the commission feels is most appropriate, then we'll go along with it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Speaks.
Mr. Speaks, is there a imminent development plan or is this just a subdivision for the time being? Do you know of any potential development for the industrial property?
It would be my, uh, my thoughts that it would be very similar to what's due west there on Range Line Road, these commercial warehouses and, and things of that nature. And I would think now, these lots range anywhere from one point three acres up to eight acres. And, uh, you know, on a one point three acre lot, you can't have a huge development. But that would be my idea.
But the intent, the way this is designed would be for each lot to have an individual curb cut onto Old Range Line Road, correct?
Right. That's correct. And I think the recommendations were that it would be limited to one per lot, which, and I'd like to point out too that the smallest lot we have frontage-wise is a hundred and fifty feet, and the lots across the street are, uh, the frontage is less than that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Might need a legal opinion on this, but if it's, it's obviously not zoned, but if there were, if there was a meeting and, and discussed with the nearby neighbors, could there be covenants on what could go on the property that would be probated and wholly overseen by the courts? Has that ever been done?
Um, the Planning Commission, the city-
We don't get into that. No, but I'm just asking for my own knowledge.
To, to be honest, I don't know if there have been private agreements worked out. I've, and that's, since we are not involved and would not enforce, it's not something we would necessarily know about.
Right. Okay. Well-
Yeah.
I, I think it, yeah. I, I think that just becomes a whole different animal, so to speak, but I like the idea of holding it up and getting people to the table. I think it's very, very important, especially when you're talking about an unzoned area.
Okay.
I have a legal question as well. There seems to be some opinions that this particular development will reduce the value of surrounding property and some that perhaps think that it will not. If a group is objecting to the development and encouraging denial of it based on a decrease in property value, what evidence might they need to bring if this is held over to help support that argument?
They would have to have a real estate appraiser come in here and test or give that opinion to y'all. I'm not sure that in this particular instance that would be a valid argument because since here's no zoning, if you follow that philosophy, then half the county would have that philosophy. But I think the, the safety and traffic issue that Mr. Lawler raised certainly is, is the one you need to hold it over for to see what kind of access management can be made here.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I went and took some pictures like that today. That's a piece of property right across the street where somebody made a commercial use. Those pictures, because I got the same ones on, exactly what we don't want to see all the way up and down.
Mr. Courtney, I'm sorry. Mr. Speaks had the opportunity to respond to y'all's, y'all's statements, and that's all. Thank you, Mr. Speaks. Are there any more questions for Mr. Speaks?
I think, other than the traffic management, which would be huge on commercial, you know, nearby residential, would be the watershed issue too as something that really needs to be addressed, even though it's not zoned, because yes, we're very cognizant about, you know, the stability to the ecosystem there.
Thank you, Mr. Speaks.
Thank you. Quick question from Mr. Anderson. I think I know the answer to this. I'm not sure we've had a, an application where the county and the city abutted. Is, is there any, is there anything, we can talk more in deliberation, but given the adjacency, has that changed?
Not really. The codes and the ordinances are what they are, whether it's abutting or ten miles away.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question.
Okay.
Can I? Where it says City of Mobile, I guess it's not on that one, those lots that are sitting with some of those fine things going on, is that in the county or is that in the city?
It is in the planning jurisdiction, but not in the City of Mobile.
Okay. So that's-
Were these photographs?
Okay. Okay.
All right. Thank you. We will move on now to number nine, which is the Winfield subdivision unit five. Is there applicant present? I can't. Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Austin. I didn't see you sitting back there. Okay. And you're okay with all of the recommendations?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak against it? We will move on to number 10, which is the Bragg Grove subdivision, phase four. Mr. Graham?
Roughing Graham, 6576 Airport Boulevard. I am the representative of a development group that has been developing phases of this subdivision. This is the fourth phase of a continuation of a residential development. The only issue I have is the, is the, is the item one relating to the future, access point to Jeff Hamilton. In the staff report, they mentioned I was going to pass these out. This is a, I came in sort of after the fact on this project. I didn't initiate this development, but came in after the downturn and bought, um, let, let's get this out. You may look at it, it may be easier to kind of explain what's going on. The first, the first page is what was known as a master plan that was submitted, and I, I can't really read the, it's a small thing and I apologize. That's, that's all I could do, but it looks 2011. This is before my time, but this was a master plan that showed a multi-phase development. And it, at that point, it shows an access to Jeff Hamilton in phase five. And I, I've tried to highlight that in a little pink in that. I don't own that piece of property. I, I just bought the property to the west that's shown in green on page two of what I've handed out. And what I, what I am doing is a continuation of that master plan. And I'm a little, was a little confused as to what is being required in terms of additional phases. All I will be involved with will be this phase, phase four, and then phase five, which would come, you know, several years from now, depending on the absorption. This is a D.R. Horton project. Bulk sell lots to them, and we just develop the units as the, the demand rises. So what I, what I'm-
Excuse me, Mr. Graham.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. That's basically the same thing. What we, actually, what we've done, we've, we've reduced the, reduced the number of lots in our phases. So what I, what I need is some clarification as to what the intent is of the, of the staff and the Planning Commission as it relates to, to the subsequent phase, phase five, because right now we don't show it an access other than what's currently built. And once we build phase four, I will have, I will have access to Jeff Hamilton Road. So I'm doing just, I'm doing just what was, what was proposed back in 2008. I've just continued that, that scope. Now, obviously, the, the individual that owns phase five on these drawings would have to have an access to Jeff Hamilton Road, as I understand it. So with that, I please some guidance as to what-
I have a question, Mr. Olson. When, when this was first proposed in 2008, there were supposed to be two access points, correct? And the second one completed before phase, the phase we're going into now?
Yes, ma'am. If you look, you have a copy of the sketch from the 2008 application that shows the phasing and the, and I'm sorry, I did, the phase that is before you today was shown as phase three. The second point of access, which was here, was shown as phase four. And then this last was going to be phase five. The staff unaware of the 2011 plan that Mr. Graham had or that, or that he did not have the entire property, the staff based our recommendation on the original plan and phasing as submitted. So that's where the condition requiring a second point of access before any other phases are developed. Unfortunately, Mr. Graham does not have control over this property, so the only way he could provide it would be through this application, and there are issues with that with what the county would require as far as construction of turn lanes and things of that nature. So, you know, staff, and I explained that to Mr. Graham earlier. I think he wanted us to explain it again for the record. However, the commission chooses to go from here is obviously your choice. He's made his request that the conditions regarding the future point of access be removed.
How many lots will you wind up with that are not in phase five? So when it's all done and said, you're only responsible for-
Two, three, four, and five.
And how many lots will you wind up with?
In this phase, this, this application, phase four, there's thirty-four lots. In phase five, I think it's similar, thirty-four, thirty-three, thirty-four. And I do, actually, have, we have drawn that, that phase.
So in, in this version, these numbers you've, you've put in there? Okay. It was just a little confusing because it shows like two phase fives and-
Right.
I hate to sound like I don't know what I'm talking about, but phase, where the access point is now? Where is your access to Jeff Hamilton in phase two, if any?
We, we come through the existing entrance, the roundabout entrance. There was only one phase-
Which is in phase one?
Correct. There was only one phase developed when I came along.
Okay.
And that's phase one?
Correct.
With that main entrance?
And so you're going to wind up total with somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred lots?
Well-
I mean, if you count the parts that you're not involved with anymore?
There was, there's seventy-two fa, in phase one. There were thirty-one in phase two, twenty-six in phase three, so sixty-four more. So whatever the math comes out, two hundred lots.
With one access point.
But I don't see where the, where the recommended access to Jeff Hamilton in the original phase five would service the lots we're talking about developing now.
I agree.
I kind of think it's a mute issue. And I doubt many people from the other phases are going to go around that roundabout through to another access to get onto Jeff Hamilton Road.
It's not just for the everyday traffic. It's also for life safety issue. If there's an accident or for whatever reason that entrance is blocked. But as I said, you know, we were basing everything on the original approval that did include a second point of access. So if y'all choose to remove that, that, that's up to the commission.
But what's the, I mean, you have now a new landowner that is kind of overlapping on this existing master plan. Is there any precedent for this? You know, any other similar situations? Because you kind of have this amalgamation and kind of overlap that doesn't quite go together.
There, it's not uncommon for subdivisions to have different developers over time because of properties being sold. One developer only developing phase one, as in, in this case, and then somebody taking over the other phases or units. You know, we still always go back to that original plan for our review. So again, it goes back to if the commission feels there needs to be that condition placed on there, it's maybe going to make it difficult for Mr. Graham since he has no control over the only other location for a point of access.
Doesn't it also appear that Mr. Graham's plan is a reduced amount of lots compared to the original master plan?
The, the original master plan, I think I just looked and saw two hundred and forty-seven was the total lots.
Because those, those phases extend all the way back to the creek with additional lots on them. I'd say that's been cut off.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
I have a question about, is that, you're saying you don't control that, I get that. Is that not an opening on, at this point?
It will be.
When they come in?
That's right.
So doesn't that satisfy the two, in case one is...
Right.
Are they going to be double entries?
Our, our recommendation, though, was that because of the future, or the earlier approval, having the phasing done so that that phase would be done before the next phase after this. That's why we didn't require it of this phase or prior to this phase. So again, I go back to my earlier statement. If the commission chooses to remove that, then when that property to the east comes in, they will be required to tie into this subdivision, and Mr. Graham was aware that that would be expected.
And you're stopping here, and all this is not in any of your plans?
If you'll look at the, the green, what I did, the, you know, typically, when they did these master plans, they try to maximize the number of lots. I retracted away from the wetlands, the creeks, came up the hill, and we didn't use it. Well, there's five or six acres of this land that's vacant that'll be that way for, forever.
And is that roundabout entry there, is that, is that a two-way or just one, that people have to line up on one street, or is it a double entry?
It's, it's, it's a...
It's wide?
It's wide, it's...
It appears that, but I, I really can't tell.
It is. I mean, it serves, it serves, it's sort of one of the first really roundabouts that was built in Mobile. So you see, it has a boulevard entrance, so you actually, I've always argued that it seemed like you have two entrances with something like that.
Yeah. And there's a total of, of how many altogether when this whole thing goes? 107, is that what?
Well, I, from what I'm responsible for with was...
But what is the total when you reduce back from the original 200 and something? How much smaller?
Yeah, I don't know what he had, the...
I, I think it's going to be around 100 and, between 175 and 180.
And it was to what?
Because if you look at that, right, if you look at what's shown on Phase Five, which was counted in the 247, that's quite a number of lots. So between not having that now and then whatever other reduction it takes it down to that...
Yeah.
I have a question. So in your Phase Three, you have, I guess, a road being constructed up here, is that correct?
It's, it's already in.
Okay, it's already in. And is that, what does that connect to? Is there a road?
No, it just stubs into the vacant land of the west.
Okay, so that's not really any additional access?
No, not, not this time. Once, once that vacant land of the west was, was developed, they would have to connect to that street.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Graham. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against it? Yes, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Lee Moore Shand. My address is 2549 Hedgeroe Drive. I am actually a member of the Phase One HOA, so the 72 members that he says he's not responsible for. What he said, part of what he said is correct. We did have an existing Phase One when he came in. However, when he came in, he made quite a few promises that have not been kept, one of which was our, our common area one, which has both our detention pond and he built a second detention pond for his phase. It, I don't know how to describe it. I, I presented pictures, I turned over pictures, if y'all want to look at them. It has not been maintained in five years. He's never turned it over to us. It has, has created not just an environmental hazard, but also a safety hazard. It's supposed to be a detention pond, it stays full of water all the time. So the, the weir has been plugged probably 80% of the time. He goes and unplugs it when we call A.D.M. There's red dirt going into the wetlands. He admits that he's already had to clean that out a couple of times. He deeded it, I say he, DMIH, I guess more accurately, deeded it to the second HOA that he created. He talked about the single entrance. The single entrance has been maintained 100% by the 72 homeowners in Phase One. We have asked repeatedly that the other phases chip in. He says he doesn't have to because he created a second HOA. So this will create not just a financial burden, a further financial burden on the 72 homeowners in Phase One who have already been burdened significantly. But it also creates safety hazards. We have trucks, construction vehicles, all kinds of stuff coming down our street. We have children playing outside. This is a neighborhood that has been completed, our phase of it has been completed for three or four years. We're still having to deal with construction vehicles. We've asked repeatedly that he put in at least a construction entrance. He refuses. It's reached the point where we have, we have incurred legal fees trying to get this resolved, and that burden has been placed again on the 72 homeowners. We are in the phase, the first phase, many of the homes are patio homes, smaller homes. We have a lot of retired people on fixed incomes, we have a lot of young families. We are taking on the entire burden of paying for the entrance, all the damage is being caused by his trucks. And I do want to address what he said about the, supposedly, the entrance. And I'd like to actually read, this was what he said under oath in a previous hearing, deposition. He was asked specifically, are there going to be any other entrances? He said, yes. Where are those going to be? And he said, well, let's, let's see. Basically, he said, I say it's going to be right there, the Jeff, and Jeff is Jeff Hamilton. If you look at, I believe, I haven't seen what he just handed you, but I assume it's the original master plan. If you look where Jeff Hamilton is, you'll note that it's right where Phase Four meets Jeff Hamilton. So he, he committed under oath, he was going to build another entrance. Now that it's time to actually build it, he wants to go back to the fact that it's going to be built in this other phase. As far as we can tell, the individual that bought that other property has no plans whatsoever to develop it. So we're going to be stuck with one entrance that 72 out of 200 homeowners are having to pay for, and have construction vehicles going up and down our streets for the next two to three years with no commitment whatsoever from Mr. Graham or DMIH to assist in any way with these costs. We have offered him several options as far as resolving this, and right now, I'm respectfully requesting that you please hold this over. And we, we did not get notice of this meeting, even though we are the HOA that he's going to be driving through, we are the neighborhood that hit the entrance, the only entrance, that he's going to be driving through with all these construction vehicles. We have never received notice of these meetings. I found out about it a few days ago, I called the planning commission, found out when the meeting was, and I had to hurriedly put together stuff. We would, we would really respectfully request the opportunity to either him sit down with us and resolve this, as it should be, or that we at least have time to put together, you know, legitimate arguments for, and document what they are. And we have numerous arguments for why this should not go forward. Like I said, the pond maintenance is a major issue, the, we're, we're now into nearly $30,000 in expenses that have been paid by the, the 72 homeowners to maintain this entrance with no, no help whatsoever from DMIH or any of the other homes, even though he has other homes built. They're using this entrance every day, and nobody else is helping us pay for it. We have electricity for the sign out front, we have, we have to maintain the lawn care, everything is on us. And, you know, the main thing with the pond, I know y'all say property values aren't that big a deal, or, or it's not your jurisdiction, I should say, I know you think it's a big deal. We've had several homeowners who've sold their homes who literally took 10, $15,000 cuts in what they paid for their home because of the condition of this pond. It, it is horrendous. Our backyard is caving in.
Are you, are you finished?
Okay, well, I mean, I, we just, we just respectfully request some time that this be, at least be held over until we can try to resolve some of this, because the, the issues are really just too, too many to list in this hearing with such short notice.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay, let's move on to number 11. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Graham. Mr. Lyon, if you don't mind, sit back down.
Well, I'm the bad guy. The, the access thing, let me, let me explain the access. As, as we all know, two years ago, an issue arose with the International Fire Code requiring two access to subdivisions, over a certain number of lots. Joe Vincent sent right there with an application, and he just wheeled through that that was absolved and removed from the books, and I was of the, of the opinion that I was going to have to, by requirement, put another access, okay? I came down to the county engineering department to, to talk to them about that. They go, you don't have to put another access. That's been removed, you don't have to do it, but if you do, we're going to require turn, another turn lane to get in there. I said, okay. So I go back, we engineer it, come back to the original thing, and what I submitted was what I submitted. So whether I said it under oath, I don't know, but I don't remember any of that, but that's neither here nor there. That'll be sorted out because they're suing me right now, okay? That'll get sorted out. The matter of the detention pond is, if you'll go back to the, the beavers dammed the pond up. I've dug this thing out numerous times. Every time I fix it, they come back and dam it back up. I've paid the property taxes on all these common areas from day one. Her entrance, every other common area. Ask her if she's paid the taxes. She had, I have. That's no problem, I'll handle that. I've tried to get her to sign an agreement that shares in expenses based on the number of lots in the neighborhood. She refuses because she wants me to go fix a detention pond that I don't put a drop of water in, not one drop, but yet I've maintained it. You don't have to mow detention ponds, you just have to make sure they work. My, the engineer that designed it says it works. I got a letter says it works. I'm not, I'm not the bad guy, but yet they want, they want me to do all these things because that's the way they want to run the show, and that's fine. My question now is, to the staff, can I do another subdivision? Just, I'll put an entrance in, call it Roughen Estates, and not, just put a new entrance in, put a new entrance, call it Roughen Estates. Can I do that? Because I'll hold it over, I'll, I'll resubmit application. Can I do that?
And not have access to the existing subdivision?
Well, I have to, I got to already stub out, I'll stub into it, but I just put a new entrance and call it something else.
That's not really going to solve any issues.
No, but can I do that?
Let me ask you this, Roughen, you have, there, there are existing two, currently two HOAs, and there, there are not, there's no way they can be joined?
We try, we, I've got documents, I've had documents drawn since 2013 to, to share in the agreements. Ask her, is that true? Is that true?
Address your comments to us, please. We're not going to have a debate here or figure out a lawsuit.
We're in a lawsuit.
You're still going to have the same issues if you do that, Roughen. You're still going to have access to her, so you're still going to have, and that's not going to solve anything.
Is there a way to, to join the HOAs? It just seems just really odd that you have one neighborhood and multiple HOAs, like...
Well, what happened, this is, this is a foreclosure situation.
Excuse me, Mr. Graham, the HOA issue is not before us.
And the commission has no real jurisdiction over an HOA?
We've had, we have a document since 2013 that spells out the combination of having two HOAs, paying the bills based on the number of lots in each unit. I'll eventually have the majority of lots, my HOA thing. It's a recorded document. She just doesn't want to sign that agreement till I fix her detention pond. That's all it is.
Thank you.
But can I, can I submit a note, application for a new subdivision? And what, what do you want to achieve by that? Well, I just...
If you're still using her road or not...
Not her road.
The public roads.
Entry, main entry. You're using the entire subdivision roads, what are you going to accomplish?
Then, then the 64 lots that would be, now would be paid to another homeowner association, that's what it is.
Well, if, if...
If the commission's going to require you to have a second access point, then I can understand that. But if they're going to approve you without that condition, doing a complete different subdivision is not going to achieve anything.
We don't need three entrances to a subdivision. That's my point to them. I don't know, you know, I don't want to put another entrance in, but I will if that's what it takes to, to, to make everybody happy.
And if you do that, she's going to, her HOA is going to have access through yours.
That's fine. It's, it's public streets, it's, I don't own them, she doesn't own them, they're pu, public streets.
Thank you, Mr. Graham.
We'll figure this out in deliberations.
What's that, Mr. Anderson?
So we'll figure this out in deliberations, I guess.
Or hold it over.
We all will.
Or hold it over. Mr. Lyons, we are moving to number 11. River Center Subdivision.
Thank you. B.J. Lyon, 3601 Spring Hill Business Park Drive, Suite 102, represent the applicant, River Center Investments LLC. I don't know if the staff report was altered any way, but my client agrees with it, there is one, one item that we need to discuss, but I just briefly want to go over the project with you all very, very briefly. All the owners are local, the Whitespinner Realty owners, Dan Elkin, Matt White, Pat Coffey, investing in Mobile, it's 23 acres, it's a mixed-use development, got a commercial site along Schillinger, and apartments in the back, and these are going to be very 172 high-end apartments, walk-ups with garages, four-plex, two-plex for families. Nothing is like this in Mobile, and this is a low-density apartment development because could have put as many as 600 units in there, and there's 172. So it's going to be a gated community, rec center pool, pet parks and that type of thing. $38 million apartment complex, about $3 million in rents, and then, of course, you're going to have the commercial development. So the overall project is somewhere between 50 and 60 million dollars, really good for Mobile. We agree with all the staff recommendations and the conditions, except with respect to 14, would request that the, it be changed if there's a, an alteration of access to the community area access easement on the PUD, that that be an administrative approval rather than a full commission approval.
That's number 16 in the, in the, in the PUD.
Did it?
Yeah.
Okay, I haven't seen it.
I, there was some, there was some...
There was a revision to the engineer's report, I'm trying to, it was emailed to me this morning.
Did you say number 16, Mr. Lyon?
Okay.
14.
14, okay.
Down on the PUD side, if, it says if there is a change in access to the common area access easement, then it will be full commission approval, and we would just request it, that administrative approval with the staff.
For number two.
And all the owners are here, by the way.
George, did you get Rosemary's revised comment about the construction plans and the land disturbance permit?
Yes, it came up in the meeting.
Okay.
What do you, which?
It was, the engineer, on, it says number two, there's, B.J., what? Oh, it's number two under engineering.
Item number 22 of the PUD comments, which are then engineering comments, item number two has a piece of a sentence in there that basically says that all above-ground structures need to be permitted at time of land disturbance permit. That is incorrect, and that should be removed from that comment. That's a standard note I put on, and quite frankly, no one's said anything about it till now, but it won't be in there anymore. So that's just a, a piece of that sentence that needs to come out.
Can you tell us where that, where you're talking about?
That's number three within 22?
Number two, condition 22 of the PUD, subpart two, where it says a land disturbance permit.
Got it.
The revised, because we've had some discussions... Because we've had some discussions, I have, with Mr. Lyons and Rosemary Sawyer in the engineering office the last couple of days, and she sent this revised sentence this morning. A land disturbance permit application appropriate for the type of construction work being performed is required. For a clearing and grubbing, timber harvesting permit, an approved site plan in erosion and sedimentation control plan is required. For a tier one or tier two land disturbance permit, a complete set of construction plans, including but not limited to drainage, utilities, grading, stormwater, detention systems, paving, and all above-ground structures will need to be included. The appropriate land disturbance permit, as referenced above, must be submitted, approved, and issued prior to beginning any of the construction work.
And that was added. We're good with that?
Y'all agree with that?
So you're good with that one?
Yes.
And that means prior to any... Because I know we had that issue on Gerby Road where it was just completely clear-cut. No one got to see any of the big trees or if anything could've been saved. So is there any...
We have had permit applications for tree removal on the site submitted. They are in...
For this site?
For this site. They are in process of review. They have not been issued yet. But given the site plan proposed, I... You know, there's not a lot of room to save many, if any.
So how does that read? Okay. So what we're having in our book is not what was just read to us. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And what was in the book would've allowed an opportunity to save some, or no? It wouldn't have changed anything?
Correct. The tree permits that I referred to are based on the zoning ordinance requirements, not anything to do with engineering. So basically, it's a review and a permit issuance unless there is a way to save.
The issue with what's in the book is that it requires a complete set of construction plans for every above-ground structure for a land disturbance permit, and that's not typical. And they submit plans for the drainage and the stormwater and the best BMPs, but they don't do the construction plans for the apartment complex or the shopping center just for a land disturbance permit.
There is usually a site plan that goes along with it so that there can be the other reviews, traffic, for access, planning...
There wasn't even a PUD submitted for that land clearing initially on Gerby at all.
Correct.
And that's why my phone rang off the wall.
Yeah, it was submitted prior to any applications being submitted, but I don't believe there were any live oaks on that property, which is what the ordinance requires the permits for.
So there's... We don't know if there's any live oaks, but judging on their layout of the property, they wouldn't be saved anyway, is what you're saying?
Mr. Toller, who's the urban forester, is reviewing those permits, so I can't really answer what will be approved and what can't be approved, but I was just advising you that those...
They talk about the low density, which is nice for the area. I think it will be well-received, but it's also keeping some of the green space.
I do believe... I thought I saw a tree or two shown on there, but, you know... I think Ms. Lathan was asking me about the condition, the request to change that to admin PUD. Staff is fine with that?
You're okay with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is that it, Mr. Lyons? Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this development? Application, I'm sorry, not development.
Soon to be developed.
Dwayne Smith, anchor engineering, 50 North Forest Street. To answer your question regarding green space, it's actually on the PUD plan that we sent. Fortunately, I may not be able to read it, but... Um... Sorry, there's not enough light in here.
I can identify with you.
That's... Oh, lordy. That's not doing me good yet. Y'all have a bigger version of the...
The site plan that was submitted shows a total of 4.22 acres of green space being provided.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, and what was the required? The required was only like...
2.34.
Yeah, so we're almost double the required green space.
And you've got some trees on that green space?
Sorry.
Great.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Is anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Thank you very much. Okay, well, if I can find where I am. We're moving to the deliberation phase now. Number one, Fulton Road Baptist Church. It's been recommended for a... Or requested to have a holdover to the January 4th meeting, is that correct? To January 4th, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two, that is White Bark Drive.
That was recommended for a holdover, too. The long leaf, is that the long wrong?
Yes, that's the long leaf.
That was requested. And we said January 4th?
Yes, ma'am.
Move to lay over till January 4th?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three, which is the Range Line Crossing subdivision. The applicant was... It was recommended for tentative approval.
Move to approve based on staff recommendations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Old Shell Road.
Move to approve based on staff recommendations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number five, 3201 Bay Road.
Move to approve based on staff recommendations, omitting the requirement of number one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Application is approved. Number six, Enterprise subdivision. Just to make sure I understand exactly what he was asking for. He wanted the access to lot two, if approved by ALDOT, to have one curb cut and then two to lot one? Or do I have it backwards?
Well, I believe the discussion ended up with the... Since it's a service road and under ALDOT controls, simply say that access is limited to... For the service road to ALDOT approval or something along that lines will come up with better verbiage if that's the intent the commission wishes. And then to maintain the condition, limiting the access to Western America Drive for lot two to one curb cut.
Got it, yeah. So move.
Second.
Properly moved and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number seven, which is Clark Jr. Subdivision, Ingleside Avenue.
Move to...
Go ahead.
Move to holdover to the January 4th meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number eight, Old Range Line Road Commercial subdivision.
Think it should be held over if we're gonna discuss it for a second. I think because the people are very interested that are nearby but didn't have noticed till recently, that we should give an opportunity, especially with the owner not present, to also speak to the commission. I would like to recommend a holdover on January 4th.
That's the longest you could legally hold it over?
That's okay. I was thinking with the holidays, we might wanna go into the next, but I get it. So January 4th would be the recommendation for a holdover.
Second.
All in favor of a holdover to January 4th?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Be held over to January 4th. Number nine is the Winfield subdivision, Unit 5 addition.
Move to approve based on staff recommendations.
Second.
All in favor?
I have a quick question on this one. I missed the last meeting, but it was a holdover for 25 lots. This is now 19, so it's a different application, correct?
It is not uncommon for... Well, I'm sorry, this is a new application, yes, ma'am.
Right, okay. And in the past, there were concerns about having to do the opening for a second entry?
Correct, and that's not part of this.
Wouldn't be part of this now, because I know that both subdivisions that it backs up to were very concerned about that, but I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly.
Correct. As you can see from the layout, there is no other access.
Right, okay. Thank you very much. That's good. It's already been moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Number 10, Prior Grove subdivision, phase four.
I don't see where the secondary access is necessary with the approval of this phase at this time. The HOA concerns seem to be outside of the purview of this commission. I'd like to recommend tentative approval, removing item number one.
Just to clarify, was the intent of the comment to apply to future phases, or was it was to apply to this phase of development?
The intent was that if this is approved, there'd be no other phases until a second point is provided, wherever provided.
Right, but, yes, but not requiring the construction of a second entrance as part of this phase.
Correct.
But they would...
But that is something y'all can discuss if you choose.
What about a construction entrance? Do we get into that at all?
There have been... Now, they have been, from my recollection, either PUDs or planning approvals, but in the city where you have dealt with that, I don't recall a requirement for a construction entrance on a subdivision in the county. That's not saying it hasn't been done, I just don't recall it.
Would it be allowed since we know that that is a contention?
It probably could, but only enforced by the county, which brings up another topic. I have spoken with the county attorney about getting a representative from the county engineer's office back at these meetings like we had 10 years ago, because so many... I mean, every meeting we have an issue that comes up in the county, and county attorney was very favorable about it, and he's talking with his people now about that. But in this issue, I think it's a great idea, but nothing we can do about it if they don't do it. We can request Mr. Moran to do it and hope he complies.
Just looking at this aerial that's sitting in our book, it almost looks like there's a trail there that's been developed that could become... I know it's gonna be part of the lots eventually, but...
Depending on what the, I guess, the topography is right there. If there's a ditch or...
Oh, I never think about it being a ditch. Looks like it's something, somebody's created some kind of path.
Were there any updated comments from the fire department in light of this change of situation?
No. No, because the state fire code was amended to not require a second point of access.
That's right. It's for everywhere.
I guess what I'm trying to reconcile is the second entrance that's planned as part of, I guess, the original phase one, and not having any assurances that that would ever be built. And obviously, the applicant doesn't have any control over that as well, so in my mind, I'm trying to reconcile how to address this in the notes. I'm inclined to require the second entrance for future development unless could get assurances that the... That second entrance would be built at some point in time. I don't know how you would do that, but...
We can't really... We can't do that until phase five is in front of us, right?
You know, can't compel. It would have to be either... This applicant would have to talk to that owner and get some kind of agreement.
These are not private streets. They're maintained by the county, correct? That puts a whole nother angle on it.
Is there a second to Mr. Atchison's motion?
Second.
I guess I just would like to point out that there was some feedback and a holdover requested so that the phase one HOA could look further into it. Just wanted to throw that back out there.
It sounds like it's got a sordid history, if it's already been through court or depositions or whatever's going on, but to me, anytime you can sit down, and I don't know who's considered if that's a good thing with this or not, but it would be nice if they could work out something with the maintenance, some kind of understanding. If there can't be a construction easement, you know, that is part of what we recommend because we don't oversee it. The city's not in charge, it's county. They're not here to nod their head if they're willing. So I think resting it a little bit...
I just don't see any value to resting it. It sounds like the developer and the neighbors are in a lawsuit, and again, that part is outside of our review and comment. And I think the construction entrance could be a good idea. It's kind of a offer to ease the tensions between the neighbors and developer, but again, with the fire department and the access, kind of removing that requirement of two accesses to Jeff Hamilton was fairly recently.
But if we get a chance to rest this till even just our next meeting as opposed to taking it out further, then we could look at...
Excuse me, Ms. Rich and Mr. Atchison. Mr. Graham has indicated he will put... He would put in a construction entrance.
Maybe just sitting down and saying, "I'm willing to do a construction entrance," that would calm down some of the angst that's going on in a subdivision, you know, that's going to affect the people already in place, and I realize it's not the same developer, and all those things happen, but it... I just think that maybe we wanna give it a little time.
I think Ms. Lathan was just pointing out that Mr. Graham signaled that he is willing to do the construction entrance.
Is that correct, Mr. Graham? You will put a construction entrance in?
Yes, I will do that, but the phase... I don't have access to phase five. They could make me have to build an entrance. I have no way to do it. I can't do that. That's dining room, cellmate's plane, I'm playing my...
So you're agreeing to a construction entrance, but you can't erect one?
Yes, I will do a construction entrance for four, and then five, actually, I gotta go to the visiting. But I'll agree with that. So you see the triangle shape? I don't own the land. Only access I have to Jeff Hamilton is live report four.
This application's for phase four, so why don't we add a requirement for a construction entrance during this phase and remove the permanent requirement for an additional entrance? for an additional entrance?
Question for staff, what does that do to the Triangle property if we make? Does that change the PUD at all, or just so they would still?
When it comes in, it will be looked at as we did this one, compare it to the original approval, and make the recommendation that they tie in to the two street stubs that were, that are part of Phase One. If you do move forward with the motion, you also need to remove condition number two.
Okay.
Mr. Atchison, would you like to restate your motion?
Well, I, I have a quick question for staff. Have, have they submitted essentially their updated master plan two staff?
Other than what was submitted today, no. But if you approve what is before you today, we know what's coming next.
Okay.
So I will amend my motion to approve removing items number one and number two and requiring a construction entrance during the construction of phase four.
As volunteered by the applicant?
As volunteered by the applicant.
Second.
That's good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We will move on to number eleven. Brewer Center subdivision.
Move for approval, subject to the change, and if somebody could read that to us from the staff so we hear what was changed?
Are you going to read it again?
Well, the one, not, well, it was something to do with number, what was it, number?
The PUD or the engineering comment?
Yeah, the PUD, the PUD.
The, the PUD is-
Number twenty-two.
Number twenty-two, and it simply will change it to say that it can be an administrative PUD.
That's number fourteen.
That's number fourteen.
Yeah, that was fourteen.
I'm sorry.
There are two changes that we have, because the language came in on twenty-two, that's not in our book.
No, that, that's the engineering comment, and that eliminates the requirement for the full set of construction plans for the land disturbing permit.
Right, okay.
But isn't it replaced with the?
What Rosemary emailed Mr. Anderson this morning.
And was read to us.
She did send it to me? Okay. I remember seeing it.
So it's basically now the staff report, it's just that as amended. So if we say the resolution or, or-
Approval.
We're going to vote. I'm using resolution, it's not a resolution, but to follow the staff recommendation for, um, number twenty-two as amended and read at the meeting. And then for fourteen, to say that it would take a administrative approval for changing the PUD. Correct?
Yes, um, or we can even simplify it and say that any revisions to the approved PUD will be administrative plan unit development applications, or maybe plan unit development applications, administrative, and that covers it all.
And that normally is if it's a minor change, but...
Well, the, normally what it is, is say, on one of those out parcels, you've approved the overall concept and layout, so doing those administratively. The reason that we had initially recommended that the full site come back if there are changes to the entrance drive, the private entrance drive, is because that's what really is pushing for the PUD to come to you in the first place. Well, you know, you look at it further, if the way it's proposed now, the future changes would simply be a shift, you know, uh, that's not a big deal. If they add something for an administrative PUD, we route it by traffic, we route it by everybody, just like we do coming before you, so you've approved the concept-
But it wouldn't come back to the commission?
Yeah, there's no point in it coming back to the commission.
Okay, that's fine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That application passes as amended or as changed. Okay, Mr. Olson, do we have any further business today?
Uh, the only thing I would like to do, I think it was the last meeting that I mentioned to you about having a business meeting in January. We do have the tentative date of January twenty-fifth. That is when the consultant will be in town. That's your off, off Thursday for the month of January, and we will contact you with more details about location, time, and all of that.
Okay. Is there anything further?
That's all I have.
Thank you so much. Meeting is adjourned. No, I'm not going to get my gavel there. Anybody here left?
But us.
And those little stragglers on hit road. Yes, I should-
Wow.